Oh my god, stop, I turned everything off. Turned my dad.
The group text inviting people for a party on the weekend, they're going to pitch right now to replace.
He said he was coming, that's all he knew.
Yeah, he pinged me, stuck somewhere. I don't know where it is.
No pen.
I had a pen. I have one.
That your two fingers.
It's like a spring.
Yeah, that's.
I have a really pretty pen.
It's for hobbies.
Except it doesn't open and close really well.
I know, I like that.
Okay. Called a meeting to order. This is the Village of Cornwallon Hudson zoning board of appeals meeting, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We're dealing with a continuation of a previous previously presented application. The Glenn Danning property at Two Riverbank Lane. Susan Eichelberg Glenn Danning as property owner is seeking approval for variances from section one seven two dash three nine D of the village zoning code to allow for the construction of a fence. Slash gate that is twelve feet at its highest point. When the code provides that fences shall not exceed a height of six and one half feet. The property is situated at section one oh three, block one, lot seven, ten point two and fifteen point two. In the village of Cornwallon Hudson, said lot also being known as one dash three Riverbank Lane. The property is located in the CR dash one Conservation Residential Zoning District. Alright, so let's see, when we left off previously in August. The applicant had presented some additional information that we had requested previously about the the exact location of the gate and the fence. Its distance from the road. We had discussed several issues about, you know, location of the fencing, location of the gate, what's being removed, what's staying. We had asked the applicant to kind of provide some some context as to why this application is pertinent to why it should be granted a variance from the existing zoning code. Some of the things that they had they had pointed out was that the the house is a historic building, having had some history with the Underground Railroad. So it's a significant property inside of the village. Also that that by moving or by creating the gate that they're proposing, it allows for them to remove some fencing, which is obstructing the the view of part of the historic home. They had presented some some images of the proposal inside of the context of of the view corridor. Trying to make their case that it was not not obstructive, it wasn't wasn't obstructing anyone's view, it wasn't kind of sticking out, it was sort of within the context of their property and the neighborhood. We discussed some practical issues in terms of entering the property, whether it would interfere with traffic along the along the road, how any emergency vehicles would would access the property, what it's constructed of. Various issues such as that. I guess it'd kind of open it up with anyone on the on the board. Does anyone have any anything they want to discuss about? You know, how it's constructed, where it's constructed, what any particulars about the the application that you have any questions about? Anything that the board should should discuss?
I feel like we've pretty much covered everything.
Yeah, and I I had gone through a lot of the stuff that was presented last time. Because I was here for the prior pri- prior meeting and then the updates and stuff like that, so.
You know, in our discussion last time, we had also at least had some discussion with the applicant around the placement of the gate, should it could it be more less obtrusive if we're farther back on the road?
Right.
Or a change in the height and they felt that there was fairly locked in at that location and.
And that's because of the turnaround, because the issue with if people pull in?
It has to do with the bend in the road.
There are several issues that come into play if I may, that was let's PE for the applicant. As we had indicated in the prior meeting, the the property is historic, it is significant. In two thousand thirteen, the property was listed for the National Register of Historic Places, as we had indicated. It's a twenty-three page narrative description for the nomination to the National Register. And it listed within that nomination the house that currently sits on One Riverbank Road, which is the first house on the right as you drive in. Also, the house on Two Riverbank Lane, which is currently the Glenn Danning's residence and also the office. It also lists several areas of the property with historic ruins and gardens that are part of the overall property and the nomination of the property. In fact, the New York State Cultural Resource Information System indicates the buildings. It indicates the overall property is part of a national registered building site that incorporates the entire parcel, one, two and three Riverbank Lane. Our position quite simply is, we are creating an entrance to what was listed as the Adams Chadeine Taft Estate, which consists of the entire property. The best place to put that entrance gate is at the entrance to the property. We've set it back from the entrance in the lot line of the property to accommodate emergency vehicle access and the ability to pull off the road and not block River Lane or River Avenue when you are entering and need to open this gate. So we believe we have it in the in the correct location. We believe that putting it there allowed all the removal of all of the galvanized chain link fence in front of the historic structure on One Riverbank Lane.
There's a large galvanized fence there right now and a gate on the road itself.
Didn't you remove all that?
There's a large galvanized gate right there now that wasn't there a month ago.
That that is a temporary gate that allowed the removal of the galvanized fence for the wedding ceremony that happened ten days after our last meeting.
Right, and that was following the meeting, that was you erected that, the the gate that's there currently.
They moved moved the gate that was there temporarily so that the entire length of chain link fence along One Riverbank was removed prior to the wedding ceremony. That happened just a week and two days after last meeting. But that's part of the part of creating this entrance is the ability to open up the interior of the site and to remove the obstructions. That piece of chain link fence was one of them, there's a couple hundred feet of chain link fence, it just it came out and was disposed. So this it is overall a great improvement to the property, it creates an entrance to the parcel. It opens up the interior of the parcel and highlights the historic elements.
Okay, and the the where there's currently the the new gate, that is where the that's, I'm correct in assuming that's where the proposed?
The the new gate location is that that well, the temporary gate location is about three feet behind where our plan shows the proposed front of the current gate as it's proposed.
So three feet.
We could move it back a couple of feet and in effect, the new gate could be at the location that the temporary gate is at.
It it appears to be, you know, where the gate had the proposed gate had been laid out.
It's it's a few feet further back.
Few feet further from the road.
Yes.
So the proposed gate would be a few feet closer to.
Couple of feet further, yeah, closer to the road.
And.
I mean, the 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 final gate, the new gate, could be at the location of the gate as it sits now, at the temporary gate.
And just as a way to visualize, since there is the gate there currently, how tall is the the gate that you that you recently, the temporary?
I thought that.
That's nine feet. Okay, now that's, I mean, I just looked at, you have, it's sort of a it's sort of a standard fence with a rail at the top and then there's an extension above that with with wire netting. The nine feet is to the top of the wire netting. And then the do you do you have any idea what the height of the kind of standard fencing, what the the what the rail on top of the gate is? Without ignoring the the extension.
The extension. It looks like it's about six feet. But you say right now it's nine feet.
Yeah, I'm six, seven.
Yeah, I'm five eight and it's it's a little above me, but.
It was ten and a half with the pedestals, whatever, recall, is that?
Yeah, the pedestals are ten feet eleven, eleven inches tall. And the the top of them, the middle of the fence would kind of arches up.
Right, the maximum height is two foot above grade to the top of that finial at the center of the gate.
The temporary gate, the one that was moved forward that has chain link to about six feet and then another few feet above that of not chicken wire, but it's additional, that's nine feet, we're saying, is that correct? And and that was there to keep the deer out. Yeah, okay, are they jumping over the nine feet? But it's that way all the way around, I mean, when I look at it, it's at the road, at the at the on your road, it's the nine feet and it continues on to the the east side of the R there towards, I guess, the White House that's there. It's still on the same, doesn't go down, it just maintains that nine foot height. Well, yeah, so whether it's twelve feet at the road or nine feet at the road, there's still nine feet of fence that they can go over, not at the gate.
Well, except that we have big huge hemlocks blocking the other areas. It's not where they jump.
Now, one one thing we had discussed at the previous meeting was the the issue of the deer that, you know, you have gardens that you're trying to protect, essentially every single person inside of your district, inside of the village is also subject to deer. What we need to do is make a case for your property being unique and worthy of a variance to the zoning code.
And we believe with the historic nature of the property and the designation as such, both for the state Historic Preservation Office as well as the National Register, not only listing specific structures on the property, but listing the entire property. And we believe the entrance to the property should be located at the entrance to the property.
I'm just kind of looking through some of the examples that you had provided previously. Yeah, I just wanted to note the the photo that you have described as entry gate at one ninety, not one ninety-one Bayview Avenue. I've taken a look at that and it's the size of that gate is kind of significantly
Much smaller.
Shorter than what your proposal is.
Ms. Glenn Danning had taken these photographs, the one ninety-one Bayview Avenue, Susan, how high was that? I mean, you've got, those fences are much higher and the pillars and such are all extremely, I mean, that's it's a massive entryway. Ours isn't even as massive as that because we, you know, we're not putting in the the wall returns, we're only using two pillars and a gate. So the configuration we're looking at is this, we're not putting in the additional bolts and pillars.
I know, I've just.
It is actually less of, you can, you know, you compare the two, I mean, what we're proposing is is actually just about the center of what exists at that particular address.
But I mean, I I walked over here and I mean, it's anecdotal, I didn't measure it. But it appears to be around six feet tall, six and a half.
I would guess that to be a little taller than that.
It's not. It's not.
It's not.
It's not.
Yes. I've stood by it, I'm five eight.
You're five eight, okay.
So just sort of giving a human perspective.
Perspective is is a function also of how far away you are, this is taken, this is a little bit closer. From because this one is from the east side of River Avenue, this would be from the west side of River Avenue, so. It's all based upon your your position and your field of view too. Angular field of view for the human eye is pretty stable between people to people. I used to know what it was, but it's about a hundred and seventy degrees left to right and I believe fifty fifty something degrees vertically, give or take.
I'm just wondering if the variances for the height to exceed the six six and a half feet. Is there any reason that it can't be six and a half feet? I mean, we've discussed that was.
To be perfectly blunt, it'll look like hell. It's it's completely out of proportion, the the driveway is ten feet wide, the paved driveway is ten feet wide. To allow for emergency access, we're creating fourteen foot clear between the piers. Alright, to to create a six foot gate is basically going to look low and squat. It it's quite a lot, it's part of it, it's going to look like crap. Proportionally, this is the proper proportion. We even looked, we looked at at a ten foot and quite honestly, I I had to tell my client, it looked terrible.
I mean, that's obviously going into subjective.
Yes, it is.
A difficult word, it's difficult to argue that in a.
But proportionally, when we looked at a couple of different, you know, aspect ratios and proportions, this came out to be the best proportionally and the best appearance.
I mean, all of the qualities that you you're trying to emphasize, the importance of the entrance, the importance of the property, just kind of give a formalized entrance to the estate. Is it possible to accomplish that with a shorter gate that is more is more in line with the existing code?
So, so it translates shorter and you're sentenced to being six and a half feet or is that?
But you have a nine foot fence there now.
Understand that, I want to make sure I understand his question.
Yeah, I mean, one of the one of the the factors we consider is is basically scale, the scale of the of the variance that's being requested. Is it just a little bit more than what is normally allowed or is it much more? So I mean, in this case, it's going from, code says six and a half, it's going to twelve feet.
Just in one little spot though.
Uh, right, but I mean, I'm at the base, it's eleven feet. So I mean, it's it's still, it's a it's a significant variance from from the existing code. I just wonder if there's any way to, I, you know, previously we discussed ways to sort of mitigate that by moving it back on the property, the other way is just making it smaller.
Yeah, so the piers could be lowered and brought down so that we could bring the pier down to ten foot at the top of the pier and then then that would come in and then the gate would come up to the twelve foot peak, but the piers could be lowered a little bit. And again, if you're looking at visually, the piers are certainly much more visible than the gate construction itself. So if you're looking at appearance, lowering the height of the pier itself would would make more of a difference than lowering the height of the gate. But yes, we could lower the pier height to ten foot.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the the temporary gate that you have up there now, that goes up to nine feet. That's three feet shorter than what you're proposing and it's still, I mean, just to my, it's it's a big fence. It's a big gate.
Big deer hop over that thing and go eat.
It's also, it's a significant property.
I know.
Yes, it's it's a big property, it's it's an historic property, it does deserve a proper entrance.
I mean, I think what we're we're sort of getting at is that we recognize that it's a significant property and you've made a compelling case for creating a a formalized entrance to it. It's it's just sort of the the nature of the proposal is, it's it just seems pretty over the top, to tell you the truth. Well, I mean, it's doubling the allowed, it's almost doubling the allowed.
It may be doubling, but as as we pointed out in the previous meeting, that code requirement is for a fence.
We're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna discuss that because that's that's not the, that's not what's at issue here.
The issue here is height and and appearance.
Right, but it's not, we're 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 not, the board is not deciding whether a gate is subject to the six and a half foot requirement, that's not.
No, no, we're not, I'm, no, that was not where I was going, counsel. Where I was going was, I can understand the six and a half foot restriction on a on a fence because there are a lot of different fence types, as Mr. Doyle indicated at the prior meeting. Galvanized chain link fence is a whole lot different than something that's much less obtrusive. But my point is, fences are what's subject to that height restriction. A masonry wall is not subject to that same height restriction.
That's that's your opinion and that's not what we're here to discuss.
I'm just making the deter- the differentiation in in the different elements of of construction. And I think that by reducing the height of the pier, it goes towards dealing with some of the mass and appearance issues. And I think that the photographs that we've, renderings that we've provided really do show how inobtrusive the gate structure is itself in this setting. And dropping the height of the columns would also go towards reducing the overall appearance of the gate structure as a whole. But if, when you look at those photographs, that gate blends into the background, it's hardly visible at all.
I don't know, if that's entirely true.
This, these, these are the, I mean, you can see my truck very clearly through the gate.
Right.
It's a very open construction.
Well, you suggested, so just kind of backing up, and two two things are on the table, reducing the height to ten feet
Yes.
Of the pedestals and also moving it back three feet.
Yes, moving it to where the the current temporary gate is.
Yes, we talked about five, I think, once before, last time we were here.
We we did. We could check the exact dimensions to where.
Try to keep us on task.
I mean, you have on here, it's, you have the the lower rail on here. Is there any reason why we can't just go with that? It looks like it's maybe two feet shorter than what is being proposed.
Well, this is just scale three eighths inch to a foot, so if you come down a foot, it'd be three eighths inches come down about here.
You're talking that the, you're talking about the actual fences.
You want to knock off this top?
Yeah, I mean, what if you just got rid of this stuff? It was this, which is.
What, and you want to take, no, I think. Give me a second to confer.
I mean, it looks like it's, you know, this is.
Alright, so that the max is ten feet, right? It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what do you, you can design this to look like, look whatever you want to make it look like, is that that the peak here is at a twelve is ten? And you scale your things to however you have to do it, but I think that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah.
So did this. I mean, I would even say, I don't understand also why it's not back further than the three feet, like I I understand that people pull in, but then you just pull back out if you can't go like the issue of
Sorry, I can't hear.
The issue of why it's like, you you say that there's an issue of people pulling in and then they can't turn around? Is the reason why?
No, it's not an issue, sir, we have to we have to frame the question properly. The length of the entrance was designed to accommodate all the emergency vehicles.
Where we saw, is is actually at the entrance to the property itself. Because the the old gate was actually past One Riverbank Road, it was, it wasn't even at the the entrance to the property. One of the one of the proportions of the the estate wasn't even, you know, inside the the entrance to the estate. The the gate was further back past that property.
No, I was just looking here, it explained that actually caused problems, it was far enough and the people didn't realize there was a gate until they were closer, causing the complicated turnarounds.
This is just a miniature. Pretty old the gate, it, you know, moving it up would allow for anyone to see the gate.
Right, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, the issue was that it was back further, then people would pull in, then they see the gate and they have to back up.
Besides that, it's marked private road, people didn't read the sign.
Right, so you pull on a private road, we all, and you pull back out of it, if there's an issue. That's just the way it is, you know what I mean? I I'm just wondering like.
Ways to back up though.
To me, it's not that big of a deal if you pull in and you have to back back up, I mean, it's not a reason to say, okay, now I can then push a fence, yeah, a gate further forward because people have an issue with turning, and also double the size of the variance that you're asking for, so I think you, I mean, I think what we're trying to say is, is that can you max this thing out at ten versus twelve? Am I am I correct, trying to get this thing a little shorter?
Take five minutes, let's discuss.
Okay, should you show them these first? This is on Andorra Road and this is walking distance from your house.
Yeah, I mean, in the previous meeting, I was trying to.
You have to hold it if you don't want it. And keep it held.
So I just
Well, that much of things, I'm not the.
Right, never doubt.
Whenever you guys decide on creating the decision, Manny will have that and if it's not built in accordance with the decision.
But I think we have reason to expect that that will occur and if that's the case, then we have do we really want to put the village in our stewardship as bad faith actors? We're ready, so it's like, there's no great changes, I don't know. It's just my opinion. Just have to go through the five factors.
You see it now with the.
That's what I was saying.
The gates is there, I mean, it's like.
When I read the minutes, it was because of.
I mean, the nature of this, it looks like it's.
But the argument was that it was because people were pulling down. Yeah.
I went, I I walked by.
Yeah.
The rest of Manny, that goes to Manny's enforcement because they can't put up.
It's nine feet tall. It's nine feet tall. I mean, you know, it still looks freaking huge. And they're supposed to be three feet taller, it's insane.
The first thing we were here would figure it out that this was going to be the height, that's what we're.
Paper nap, yeah, paper napkin design.
What I worry about is like, you know, there's a lot of. Yeah, in the in the villages, they also, they say, yeah.
Right. Well, I mean, the third rail is the the deer. Because literally every single house. You can't use that as a reason.
You can have a thirty foot fence, they'll get.
They're not jumping my fence. Why don't they jump my fence? They weren't jumping my fence.
Maybe you don't have a nest. Oh, my God.
They did.
I have a, I have an apple tree in my backyard. Deer supervisor.
They're not gonna say push it back.
It's okay if I do. It's okay if I do. Yeah, I think he's got to come through the wrong iron, you're right. And again, he's pointed out that this may not be the colors.
I would hope not.
I hope not. That's about, by me, it's still gonna be a, right, so it's gonna be a massive, that is.
My, what I worry, I was worried about is the alternative, if they just, sometimes we change.
As long as it's less than six and a half feet, they can do that. Yeah, I mean, it's not. That's, that's what that, you know, this picture, I said, sort of a stick, and you're like, okay, let us do that, this is what you get. That's the message. If we don't get this, this is what you get. That's the message. It's a very pointed message.
Good.
Yeah, last meeting. I have not heard this. It's too early for that. Exactly, it's supposed to be in May. It's supposed to be the day after the Thursday night prom, and everybody gets told, no, you can't skip school on Friday. Keep up with that, yeah.
I was told it was a monthly event.
A month?
Oh, yeah, no, it's.
Who do they think they are? The what event?
Monthly? I think that's what they think, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, there's actually been a significant rise in absenteeism, I mean, you know, I mean, since COVID, I mean, just kids not going to school. And it's awful, yeah, like.
I'm, I work in Newburgh, so I'm used to that.
Even more, but even more so. You know, since.
Last year, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, this year's only been two weeks, and it's been great, so. It's the honeymoon phase.
So my wife's asking if she knows you, she asked who's the new board, and I said Jen Geller.
You don't know what, if she knows me?
Yeah, I don't know.
Who's your wife?
Kristen Doyle. We don't do hot yoga, so probably not. Where do you do hot yoga? My son loves it, too old for it, I think, I think that's the issue.
You're never too old.
You're never too old.
Is that at Sportsplex or?
What is that?
What do you do, Sportsplex?
No, at uh, Sky River, down the river, down over on uh, whatever, Grand View over there.
Sounds too far to drive on a Saturday morning.
No, it's three minutes.
You, you can drive by the new.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
It used to be a dentist office, didn't it? Or was that the little cottage? Because I think she needed a variance for that. I can't remember how many years ago, it was like, well, so am I. But I just know Kelly, what she went through to to get that opened.
Have you gone over to uh, Alma, and your friend?
I belong there in Newburgh for like a year, yeah, I loved it.
Yeah.
But it was too far to drive. So um, then I went to Yova High in Newland for like the next year, and now I'm thinking about doing the Alma here for the fall.
Yeah, I've been going over there.
Yeah?
Yeah, there's a couple, couple, I think Nancy's daughter.
Yeah.
Works there.
I love Nancy.
They compete, so the the nine o'clock Saturday, Nancy's daughter does it at nine, at nine o'clock Saturday.
Oh, so they're doing it at the same time? Yeah, I gotta get back into Saturdays. Yeah, Nancy's my favorite, I mean, I've tried out a lot of teachers, and I've settled on her.
All right, after long discussion, my clients would like to propose eleven foot toe. And just meet you in the middle.
Just one, well, medias in the middle would be six and a half feet to twelve feet.
We go from ten to twelve.
So the pillars are ten and the fence is eleven?
We can, we will make the the top of the pillar at ten, and the top of the gate itself at eleven, off grade. Which means that the gate is actually ten and a half foot high, because it's six inches above grade, it's about a two, a half park function. Or nine and a half foot higher, sorry.
Uh, just using it as, using your illustration as a reference. It seems to be that you can make a pretty strong case that if you just take these top two rails off and just have the top of this be the gate, uh, you know.
Height or appearance, I mean, if if that was, if that's, I would move that top two rail, you know, that's, that's a decorative portion of the gate.
Well, I mean, the the design is not our purview, we're only talking about.
Yeah, I would prefer to move it down a foot, because bottom line, this is about three inches, four inches here. So you're already at eleven eight to the highest point of the gate, and over here, you're down at about ten foot six, ten foot seven. So, you know, we're asking if you want, you know, I'll, I can move this down to ten foot and match the top of the the pier at ten foot, and then bring this slope up to the center. So I could, I could bring this whole thing down to um, so that I'll put this top rail or the the finial at the low end, low side of the gate at ten foot, along with the pier, or actually make the pier a little bit lower than the ten foot at that point. And then just sweep up of whatever the top portion is here, it'd probably come out to be about eleven and a half feet, maybe eleven feet. Or I could, I can slide, change the, I can change this arc slightly so that I can come up to eleven foot at the, at the finial at the top, which is gonna put you at about ten foot eight for the actual rail itself.
Uh, I mean, it's a, it's not a significant change from what's originally proposed.
Again, we're trying to maintain a look and a proportionality that.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do as well.
What we've got.
The look and proportionality of that neighborhood, this is out of scale, in my opinion, it's.
It may be out of scale with some of the other elements of construction that are in that neighborhood, it is not out of scale with the property that it's being applied to. And it is almost not visible from the majority of the area surrounding the property and surrounding the location.
I would argue that it's extremely visible.
Only if you're standing directly in front of it on River Avenue.
It's a wide open, I mean, you've got a hundred feet from here to here.
We've argued this so many times.
It's very, it's extremely visible.
It's.
You have the option of moving back towards the house where it is not visible.
I can just quote a friend of mine, okay? How visible is it if you're driving by at thirty miles an hour?
Extremely.
It's not, really, because that's, that's a static picture.
I drive by it, I drive by the property all the time, and it's, it's very visible.
All right, I'll agree to disagree with you on that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, does anyone have any other questions, comments?
No.
Uh, can we break for uh, counsel?
Attorney-client session, sure. Just need a a quick motion.
Motion to break for attorney-client session.
We can go into this room over here, yeah.
I ran through the the five tests last meeting very quickly, and I think we made the case at the previous meeting that we met them.
Yeah, I I'm suggesting that in review of this test before they get in it would be an instructive reminder, and I think that is where I think I remind them to stay in the zone board lane and out of the housing.
Those are the five criteria required. I mean, I think that would, that would still work.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Chairman and board members, I appreciate your time here with this, uh, and I suspect you're on the edge of announcing what your thinking is. And you're about on the edge of announcing what your thinking is. It it occurred to me as you all were deliberating that um a review, if you will, of the five tests against which our decision criteria is um being run might be helpful for all since it's been a while. First one says whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance. In our discussions, we have indicated uh with with data and word that um the proposed gate is gonna be marginally visible unless you are standing uh in the middle of Riverbank lane and easily fifty feet or more off the road, you couldn't stand on River Avenue and even see the gate. Number two, uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. And in our uh previous discussions with you, we've indicated also with data and word that the location of the gate is chosen to create the entryway to the three properties owned. And and as recently as tonight, we've uh outlined for you um the historical significance. Right? And as recently as tonight, we've, uh, outlined for you, um, the historical significance of such. I would, um, uh, add that, uh, beyond, um, the historical significance, which is substantial, that the presence of this property improves the neighborhood around it. And I think that's been lost in the discussion a little bit. Um, I think a striking contrast would be if we wanted to put up, uh, a set of rundown apartment buildings and came to you for variance to get a large fence to keep all the residents in, right? And that certainly is, is not, uh, what we're doing. We, uh, know, uh, very well that, um, this property is part of the living history of this town and much has been presented in that direction. It has and can continue to be a great part of where our town goes to. We are sinking money into economic development in other areas, which makes sense. This is not out of line with any of that. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Uh, we have no evidence of an environmental impact. Um, I've certainly, uh, borne witness to, um, a number of conversations around aesthetics and duh da, but that doesn't add up to, um, environmental. Um, one thing that caught my ear tonight for the second time, um, was parts of the discussion that seemed to point to, um, some version of, well, this one has to look like the rest of the neighborhood to some degree or fit in with the neighborhood to some degree. Um, I, I would submit to you that, um, trying to get them all to look alike is, is, uh, housing association stuff. Right? You know, I gotta have the right flower box. I can't get a green one. It's gotta be blue 'cause I, I don't think that's what we're trying to do. I would submit. Uh, number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. So in our responses, we have indicated that the, uh, location and the height of the fencing, uh, were chosen with good reason and we think are, um, best suited for, uh, protecting the entrance to a very historic piece of ground and limiting, um, the impact of, uh, deer and other animals entering the ground without, um, without any control. Um, so with that, um, anything you wanna add or did I, did I get my A on this one?
I think you got an A on that one.
All right, so, um, so, uh, thank you all for your time, but I, I would ask that, that we all stay, uh, clear-headed on this one. All right, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we're basically gonna do exactly what we just did and go, uh, just sort of, uh, flesh out some of our thinking on this, uh, based on the five criteria. Uh, so the first one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or whether a detriment will be created to nearby properties by the granting of the area variance.
If I could just interrupt, so, Mr. Chairman, I think we're at the point where, um, someone may want to make a motion.
Okay. Make the motion and then.
A- and then, um, so you make the motion.
To approve the variance as proposed.
In the, in the, in public hearing notice and then.
Through the criteria and then.
Well, then you'll, then you'll vote and then, uh, you can each go through the criteria.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, application as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Going to.
Second just to vote.
To vote, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll just note for the record too, this would be a type two action under SECR.
I'll say, uh, I would vote no, uh, for the application as presented.
I vote no.
As presented, no.
As presented, no.
Okay, and, um, you can each go through the, uh, the five factors if you'd like.
Okay, um, uh, just first one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or whether a detriment will be created to nearby properties by the granting of the area variance. In my opinion, it's, uh, it's an extremely large, uh, gate that's being put at the front of the property. Uh, and, um, you know, while we understand that not everything in the town, even the village needs to be. Not everything in the village needs to be exactly the same. They need to at least sort of rhyme with each other. And this is kind of drawingly out of scale with everything else, uh, in the immediate area.
Okay. Take it.
Number two is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. I found the, I think the whole board found, uh, your arguments, uh, about the, uh, specialness of the property uh, to be a compelling argument. We think it is a historic property. It's important to the village. Uh, it's a beautiful place. Uh, creating a monumental entrance to the estate is, uh, is a perfectly, um, valid argument and reason for seeking the variance. Uh, I just think kind of making an enormous gate is kind of, you know, may not be the best or most attractive way, uh, to do that. There's a litany of other wa- other ways to, to try to accomplish that, uh, that goal. Number three is whether the requested variance is subs- is substantial. Uh, the current code allows for a six and a half foot fence. Uh, the fence that you're seeking is twelve feet tall at its highest point. Uh, we went through several ways to kind of lessen that impact, um, and, uh, we feel that the height is, uh, is a substantial very, uh, request for variance. Uh, if it was something s- shorter than that, uh, maybe it wouldn't have such a big impact. Uh, but it is quite substantial the way it's presented. Four is whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Uh, early on, we had discussed, um, you know, uh, if, if the fence is going to block anyone's view, important views of, uh, you know, from the river, of the river, of the natural environment. Uh, that doesn't really seem to be, uh, that much of a concern. It's, you know, it's kind of blocking the public's view of, of your own property. So that's not, uh, that's not really, it's, it's not hindering anyone's views of the river or the mountains or anything like that. Uh, however, it is, in, in our view, fairly close to the street and it is going to be very visible. Uh, and given the height, it's just going to be a, it's just a large intervention. Uh, and five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Uh, I think obviously, uh, you know, you discussed, um, uh, reasons to keep deer out. Uh, I don't think we really wanna include that as a, a reason for, uh, adding the gate. Uh, other than that, it's, you know, you talked about removing the fence to, uh, open up views of, of the home inside the property uh, from where the, the original gate was, which was dat- back down the driveway. That's a fence that you willingly erected twenty years ago. So in our view, it's, it is self-created. So. We'd like to open it up for, um, we'd like to make a motion, uh, if you, if you choose, uh, to present a, a, a a variation on your proposal in terms of the height.
The only thing I didn't understand, you said there were other ways to accomplish this, but you didn't say what your other ways were.
Uh, well, I mean, I'm not gonna, we'll just say there are different ways to accomplish it.
All right, so the, the variance as requested has been denied. Um, if one of the board members wishes, they could make a motion to approve a lesser variance.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve a lesser variance. And it's, we would be interested in hearing, uh, a proposal from the applicant as to what that lesser variance would be. Consider both height and placement of, of the gate.
You presented the lesser variance, so we proposed ten foot at the pillar side of the gate with the same arc configuration to approximately eleven and a half feet at the center.
Okay.
This gate is not twelve feet in its entirety. It's not a, it's not a flat.
Okay, um, I just wanted to cha- I mean, I know you presented that, just wanted, uh, that's the, the alternative proposal?
So ten feet.
Eleven is.
Okay.
Ten and eleven.
Ten feet, eleven six.
So again, the, you're proposing that the, the top height of the gate is.
The max height at the center would be eleven foot six and the height at the edges at the pier and the pier top itself be ten feet.
Okay, so you're proposing, uh, to lower the height by six inches? Okay.
Six inches at the center and about a foot at the edge because right now I've got the, the pillar and pier is at ten to eleven. I'm proposing to lower that by a foot to ten.
Okay.
All right, so, um, is there a motion for eleven and a half feet at the center and ten feet at the pillars? Um, and just keep in mind that this was not, um, part of the request in the application. So if none of the board members want to make that motion, uh, you're not obligated to vote on it.
So, yeah, so there isn't an obligation to make the motion?
No.
Okay.
Uh, I'll motion to, uh, approve the, uh, the, uh, alternative proposal of eleven, uh, a gate with a height of eleven feet six inches and pillars of a height of ten feet?
And the, and the gate height would vary to match the pillar and the upward edge of the gate.
Okay, the, the, the peak of the height would be eleven foot six.
Is, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, roll call vote?
No, Michael. I'll vote no to that as well.
I'm no awesome.
No, it's not significant enough.
All right.
And just, uh, in, uh, the reasoning, uh, for the, the second vote, I believe, is just, uh, you know, a lot of the, the issues are, are the same, uh, and I, I don't think it does, does enough to, uh, kind of move the needle on whether the proposed variance, uh, or number three of, uh, whether the requested variance is substantial. Feel that that's still pretty similar to the original proposal and it is so, still substantial.
Last question would be when will certify minutes of this meeting be available?
Um, I don't know, it will, uh, it will be available in the next, within the next month.
Oh, in our next meeting?
Yes, yes, we have to approve the minutes first.
Is your next meeting in October?
Correct, second Thursday in October.
Thank you.
All right, I think the only item left on the agenda is to approve the, uh, old minutes. So, uh, can start with, uh, January. Just need a, a motion to approve?
To approve the January minutes.
I think maybe we should, uh, I guess we can approve it before the next meeting.
No.
What, these minutes?
The old minutes are my minutes. Just make sure everything's spelled correctly.
So I seconded it.
Was there a, a vote on the, um, the January minutes?
Mr. Doyle.
I seconded it.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, and then the, uh, August tenth minutes?
I'll make a motion to.
Uh, Steve, I think you were absent, right?
Oh, okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
I seconded.
Yeah. She's in the game.
All right, the minutes are approved and, um, you can adjourn the meeting, whatever you'd like.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Eight oh six.
Hooray. It's over.
So, but, do you know, I think, you know, just a procedural question. Yep.
Yeah, hold on a second.
Yep.
Just for education, I think this is.